Yeah, we need like a...
A buzzer.
A button.
You're digging a hole, Steve.
Oh my God, James' mom is hurt. Oh, she's a hoot.
Yeah.
So she calls me in panic and goes, "I have to change our schedule."
She's on tape.
Yeah, so...
I think she's just nervous about the whole thing. She's also retiring. She's moving out of state and I think she's like feeling overwhelmed.
Okay, folks, if I get folks to take their seats, we're gonna get started just here in a second.
Yeah. She's gonna do it. She's just, I think she's panicking now because she's on a date and then she's like, "Oh my God," that's like next one.
Oh my God.
Yeah. She's excited though. Yeah. If you told her, let us know what you need help with. Give us stuff to do and we'll help you.
I'd give her a list of stuff.
That's what she said. That's good.
Decluttering is always the hardest.
It is always the hardest.
Alrighty, good evening, folks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Regular Meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, I just thank you for this evening where we once again can come together to discuss the business of the city. Father, I just pray that you would be with us, that you would guide us and direct us, and that your purposes would be accomplished. And all this we ask in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Members Olson?
Good evening. Welcome, everyone.
Berantine?
Here.
Gillett?
Here.
Martinez?
Present.
Russell?
Present.
Yates?
Present.
And Mayor Jefferson?
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Five. This is consideration of minutes of previous session. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, we accept the minutes from 21 August 2017 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or changes? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item Six. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. We do have several speakers this evening. The first speaker is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding Inglewood history. And on deck is Kathleen Bailey. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening. I was gonna share a story about a fellow I met. Met him about fifteen years ago then, met him again about two weeks ago. And it's not exactly about Inglewood, but this, they're an amazing fellow. Mr. Cohn is ninety-six years old. He was born in Denver and he lived on a farm. Can you picture this in your mind? At Holly and Florida in the nineteen twenties. Denver city limits, Colorado Boulevard. And the farm didn't work out very well, so he went over to West High School, graduated from there. And he discovered he was pretty good at solving problems and making machines do what they really could do. Then the war came. He was in the Eighth Air Force in England, working with the bomb sites and that kind of technology. He was the guy who figured out that if you're flying high-altitude bombers, you have to compensate for the ground-level winds when you're dropping the bombs. He was the guy who figured out that calculation, so he kind of understood that sort of stuff. He married an English girl at the end of the war and came back to Denver. The space program was, there was a lot of interest. The Germans had figured out rockets, and the Americans figured out little rockets. And there was a desire to do a lot more with space and space travel. Martin Marietta had opened up here because General Ironworks was in town. General Iron had a strong space contingent, not contingent, part of their factory and part of their engineering. Mr. Cohn worked on the Titan ICBM, and then the Mariner and the Galileo and the Hubble Telescope, and worked on the Apollo missions. The biggest challenge, there was a decision to fly to the moon. And Martin gave him the assignment. "We would like to drill a hole in the moon and bring back a core sample. Can you make the drill?" You can't make it out of steel because steel will be too heavy to carry on the spacecraft. And since there's very little gravity on the moon, it'll have to be one that doesn't have torque. Because the torque would spin the astronauts as well, spin the... So he went to work. He figured out you can make the thing out of titanium rather than steel. And he figured out, since he couldn't have an extension cord long enough to reach it, it was happy to be battery-operated. He had to invent the batteries. And he got the thing done. And the connection, the other connection he had with Inglewood is, he and his wife went to church here for many, many, many years. After he did the Apollo mission, he worked on the space shuttle for the whole life of the program. I was so impressed. This guy invented the drill bit that drilled a hole in the surface of the moon and the astronauts didn't spin around. It was just really neat. His ability to see a problem and to find a solution for it just is amazing. He was awarded a Presidential Citation for his work. He's another inspiring, innovative Colorado inventor. I'd like to share Mr. Cohn with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll move us on to our next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Our next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding a closer look. Good evening, Mrs. Bailey. And on deck is Elaine Holtz.
Kathleen Bailey, forty-six eighty-six South Jason Street. Tonight I will present in detail a document trail that supports that in order to avoid triple disposal costs for the hazardous and radioactive approved landfill, Inglewood intentionally withheld from the state the results of a radiological test that reported the radium levels in the 2010 sludge had exceeded the safety limits for municipal landfill workers in all four sample sets. And that Inglewood then actively lost the paper trail and electronic records for not just one, but three 2010 sludge reports, even to the extreme of damaged tar drives for both Inglewood and their consulting firm, CDM, in order to hide those records. The first evidence of selective loss was a box of files removed from the plant and brought to Brennan's office. The next evidence of selective loss was that despite Inglewood's claims of irreparably damaged tar drives and limited email retention policy, Inglewood was able to locate and provide to me in a PDF file, two-hundred-and-twenty-one pages in length, the complete sludge reports and all associated emails from as far back as the 2004 sludge report and on up through the 2015 sludge report, including four pages from ACZ concerning sludge samples received November ninth, 2010. And only the 2010 sludge reports were missing. So why might Inglewood intentionally lose the 2010 sludge report? The cora claim revealed that answer. Not only were there three 2010 sludge reports, there was also previously unreported, very clear and problematic email trail between Jason Clark of Inglewood and ACZ's project manager, Tony Analek, dated November third, 2010. These documents revealed that when the original sample sets were received by ACZ on November ninth, only sludge and heavy metal analysis was requested. The RadCam was inadvertently omitted. So when Inglewood received the first 2010 sludge report, it included only the soil and heavy metals analysis report and not the required RedCam report. So immediately on December third, Jason emails Tony asking, "Was any radiological done?" Tony responds, "Nope, just in organic metals parameters." Jason immediately asks, "Do you still have samples? If so, can we run the radiological on them? Or can you send me out another set of bottles for the radiological testing?" Tony responds, "I'm checking into the sample volume remaining now," and asks, "What parameters did you want to run?" Jason replies, "Gross, Alpha, Beta, radium two-two-six, radium two-two-eight, and uranium total." Tony responds, "Sorry, but it appears you will need to re-sample. I'll send you four sixteen-ounce soil jars first of next week." The new set of 2010 sludge samples were taken by Inglewood on December seventh and received by ACZ on December eighth. ACZ ran a RedCam on the remaining November ninth samples, producing the first RedCam report. And ACZ ran a RedCam on the full sample sets received December eighth, producing the second Red... Excuse me, RedCam report. The second radiological analysis run on the full sets, sample sets, ACZ received December eighth, reported the radium values in the 2010 sludge had exceeded the safety limits for municipal landfill workers in all four sample sets. Yet despite being fully aware of the December third emails and the pending second RedCam analysis, Inglewood's Director of Utilities, Stu Fonda, and CDM went ahead and sent their request for approval to dispose the 2010 sludge a full month earlier than usual, on December twenty-first, 2010, using the sludge results from the remaining November nine samples rather than waiting a few weeks for the full report on the December eighth samples. The radium values were actually processed and identified on January sixth and January tenth. And it appears that Inglewood was fully aware of the results of the radium before Inglewood actually disposed of their sludge. But Inglewood never reported the second radiological results to the state or the municipal landfill that received that sludge. Inglewood was fully aware the radium levels exceeded safety limits for those landfill workers across all four sample sets. But Inglewood again avoided over triple the disposal cost of the hazardous and radioactive approved landfill. And Inglewood continued prioritizing disposal costs over worker health and safety as they tragically demonstrated that when they began dumping their high-level sludge on their own small allen-water filtration plant.
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Let me see if I have any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Berantine.
Please understand that I am going to respect the agreement that this council made under the advisement of our attorney since we're in pre-litigation, not to comment. But I do appreciate the information and your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mrs. Bailey? Seeing none, I'd like to move us on. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey, to Elaine Holtz, an Inglewood resident here to address council. I do not see her this evening, so I'll move us on to Agenda Item Seven. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have several speakers signed up. The first of which is Dale Harris, here to speak about immigration. And on deck, we have Sarah Boland. Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening. I guess I should preface this. I began this a week ago. Kind of like that guy on airplanes, I picked a bad day to quit smoking, you know, talking about immigration today. My name is Dale Harris. I live at fifty forty-nine South Linden Drive. This is the third home I've owned in Inglewood. I've lived in Inglewood for over forty years. I am here to give my views regarding illegals in Inglewood. I listened to the two speakers at the last City Council meeting. I also heard City Council member responses. I believe that that was the second or third time this issue has been brought up in these chambers. My opinion is that no statement should be made by City Council or any other official of the city regarding the handling or treatment of illegal aliens. If you feel a statement is needed, I would suggest the City of Inglewood will follow the law. I believe any other statement would be a divisive issue for Inglewood's citizens. I believe it would commit the city and city resources and city personnel to possible legal problems from both the community and possibly from the federal government. Any other statement or declaration would be picked apart, interpreted many different ways, brought up for further definition, and constantly subject to further clarity. In other words, an ongoing issue for the city. As we tell our children, once it's in writing and out there, you own it. This is not a feel-good declaration the city can make lightly. This is serious stuff. Please shelter this issue, leave it as it is today, and follow the law in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Harris, for coming. Our next speaker is Sarah Boland, here to speak about short-term rental and accessory housing. And on deck is David Gilbert. Good evening.
Hi, guys. I'm Sarah Boland, and I'm doing exactly what I tell my students not to do. I'm going to make little eye contact because I want to make sure that I stay on topic and tell you what I think you need to know. I live in a home with my husband and two young children. We bought our home at forty-six seventy-three South Mariposa Drive on a street of single-family homes with light traffic and even a creek in the front yard where our kids could catch crawdads all summer long and where we could raise our babies in a fun, safe, quiet environment, where we knew that we would have a lot of fun and feel comfortable going outside to play. Our dream was coming true here in Inglewood. It was awesome. But now, we live in a bustling commercial area next door to a home with a tiny home on wheels, a glorified RV, if you will, and a four-twenty friendly Airbnb that I think is operating both in the tiny home and in the home itself. There are strangers practically in our backyard weekly. Our neighbors have a parking lot just below my bedroom window that accommodates one to six cars consistently that come and go at all hours of the day and all through the night. I suddenly live next door to a booming business that robs our family of sleep, safety, and peace of mind. The type of building and rental use emboldens the proprietor next door to use this space in other disruptive ways as well. Our neighbor's residence has become a public-for-hire venue, complete with an alias name, not an address, with, let's see, night concerts with gate attendance, having invited over eight hundred people to this party for which they charged a cover charge online for tickets. Let's see. The people are consistently invited to this property for the owners to make money. It's hugely important for residents in Inglewood to understand the implications of a mortgage and to not rely on other and depend on additional sources of income that are disruptive to neighbors and neighborhoods as a whole. There have been nature walks for charge, yoga classes, drum circle classes, and these all-night raging parties that they charge for. So this is my conundrum. We're a really family-friendly family, and we're a friendly family. We like our neighbors. We want to know our neighbors. We want to, you know, have barbecues and have conversations. And if that's not possible, that's okay. But we are a very friendly family who's been forced to ask our children not to engage with the people coming and going next door because they are not our neighbors. They are strangers. And our dream is dwindling here in Inglewood. So what am I asking you for? Our dream... Well, I'll explain that to you. So I beg you, if these things with the short-term rentals and the accessory housing...
Sarah, if I could get you to wrap up your comment here in just a few seconds.
Yes, sir. Are things that you are looking at and in favor of, please be hugely intentional about zoning, expectations, specific rules, who can and cannot use properties, for what, commercial use in residential areas, because that is what's going to happen.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm living it.
I think we have a few questions from City Council for you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, sir, for coming up today.
Thank you for listening.
We don't live too far from you. We've not heard anything about this. So have you reported this at all?
Yes. Yes, I have. At first, I was trying to be a friendly neighbor, you know, trying to work with our neighbors. During one party that they warned us about, we actually left town because the party prior to that, I went over and asked politely for them to turn down their music at 5:00 AM. That was the big party, the eight-hundred-person ticketed party. So yes, I have reported them to the police.
You know what website they're advertising on?
I sent it to the city, somebody here whose secretary I think is called Julie. Is that right, Julie?
Public Works.
So I sent a snapshot of the invitation. I've sent the emails. I've sent pictures of the Airbnb advertisement. I've sent all of the stuff over.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, can we make a council request on that?
Already noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for coming and sharing your story with us. Did you say there have been parties with eight hundred people?
Eight hundred people were invited.
Were invited.
I don't think that eight hundred people showed up, but there were a lot of people. And our rule in our house is that, and their rule, because they do solstice parties and things like that. And they warned that the children are not to be present. Once the sun goes down, that's when the fire twirling begins, which I usually let my kids watch for a couple of minutes. But then, there's just a lot of stuff going on, and they warn against young children being present. I have noticed, and I don't know for what purpose because I haven't seen it specifically, but I have noticed with these parties that they put futons out in their lawn. I'm not sure what those are for, but... But a bed in the middle of the yard is curious to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
There is some... Did you attend the meeting, the community meeting for the accessory dwelling units that they had?
I did not. And I saw this one kind of advertised as such. I thought that this was gonna tie in a little bit better today. This has been a wake-up call that I need to get a subscription to the Herald.
And...
I know that there was an open house and all of those things, and I missed it. And I feel like if I don't speak now, you may not hear what really happens when...
And it is a possibility. That was more geared toward people who were already kind of maybe in favor of it. I don't know. Do you know why the email that she sent, the information she sent, why did that go to Public Works? Did you send it to Public Works or it just ended up there?
I believe I sent it there.
Yeah, I'm assuming that she said Julie. That'd be Julie Bailey. She formerly did work in community development, so it all depends on when you sent it. And community development would govern land use and zoning.
Yeah, so I was trying my best to do my homework.
But you're not sure that it went to Public Works?
I don't know, but Julie Bailey now is over at Public Works.
There's other Julies.
It would be Julie Bailey.
I can probably find it.
Oh, so you do know it went to Public Works?
Yeah, well...
Could you forward that along to council, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That we have that information and maybe in the future, if you could just copy us on it too.
Just send it straight to the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Could you just summarize for us again what it was that you would like help with from the City Council? I mean, I know you hurried at the end.
Well, I just want to make sure. So we all have single-family homes, but now I have a tiny home on the property next door that's being used for a totally different family. So now there are two families, or rentals depending on the moment, living in one area, which I don't think is allowed. I don't think you're allowed to build another house on your property without getting a permit, which there never was, those kinds of things. And then with this Airbnb stuff, this short-term rental stuff, I just think that we need to be very intentional and very calculated about the zoning of it. You know, I think that if it's by Oxford Station where people are living together in a kind of a commercial and like an apartment-type area, then that's probably to be expected. But for people to be able to open businesses next door to residential homes, I don't think that that should be legal. And I've done everything that I can to draw attention to what's going on next door to us, but I'm not finding that I'm getting much attention.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes, that does.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you for coming tonight. Did you call the police on any of the occasions where it was so crazy?
Yes.
And did they come out?
Yes.
And do anything?
Uh, no. No. There were other times that I would call preemptively. Like I said, these parties make it so we have to leave our home. And so I did call the police preemptively and said, "There is going to be..." Because...
But when you had to do the 5:00 AM to ask them to turn off?
5:00 AM, that was the first, that eight-hundred-person party, that was the first thing that happened. I did not call the police on the drum circle class. I did not call the police on the nature walk class.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just was curious as to whether they'd come out and seen some of this too, and we could have some track record. Thanks.
Further questions from Councilmember Berantine?
Could you please finish before that you were answering what the police told you?
Oh, no, I didn't. I called the police and said preemptively that there was going to be a party that night, and they said that I would need to hear it and report it at that time. But since we were going to stay at a hotel because the noise with the children doesn't work, I was not able to call because I was not there.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
So every time, every time this happens anymore, we leave town, and it costs us three hundred bucks.
Councilmember Russell, did you have further questions?
I do have another question. So it is the house immediately next door to you?
It's the house immediately to the north.
Immediately to the north. Okay.
Forty-six sixty-three, I think.
Forty-six sixty-three? Okay, thank you very much.
Yates, further questions?
Do you know if they're charging a head charge for the party, or do they rent the building and then... So they're actively using it as an event center?
Yes. And they call it the Mariposa Sanctuary. They do not use its address when they refer to their building, to their address. They say, "Come, have your wedding at the Mariposa Sanctuary." I know that she's had her child's wedding there, which I totally understand, and I think that that's romantic and fabulous. But she's got advertisements out there saying, "Have your wedding here. Have your parties here. Have your... Come to this venue. It's called the Mariposa Sanctuary. It's magical, and you should have your event, your whatever that event is."
So the family does live at that house?
It's one, yeah, it's one person.
It's one person?
She told me that she was, that the boy, that her son, was building the tiny home for himself because he and his wife were going to live there permanently. And she just kept saying, "I'm just so grateful that I can do this for him, that I can help him in this way." But he doesn't live, he lived there permanently, the whole time. And I sent an email about that, too. But now he doesn't live there anymore, so I don't know if she's renting it out to somebody like a would-be roommate, or if it's used as Airbnb. There's so much car traffic, I can't.
So there's actively somebody living in the...
Yes.
Tiny home slash RV, whatever?
Yes.
Could we get a...
And when I confronted her about that, I said, "So when are you moving it out of here?" She's like, "Never." And I said, "Are you sure that that's allowed?" And she's, "It's on wheels. It's on wheels. It's fine."
Mr. Keck?
That's the response.
Sir?
Could we get a council request on this about living in an RV on a property? I think we're not allowed to do that.
That's accurate, counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Boland, for coming and speaking with us.
Thank you guys so much for listening to me. I really...
Yes, and we'll get some more council response here in just a moment. I'd like to move on to our next speaker, David Gilbert, here to speak about historical monument proposal. And on deck is Andrea Mannion. Good evening, Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening. David Gilbert of three sixty East Jefferson Drive. This is actually, this is kind of a version of an email that I sent out to council a little while back. I've spoken with Mayor Jefferson about this. Many people know that Inglewood was once home to a film studio and biplane factory called Alexander Industries. The site of the factory is now the Trolley Square King Supers. There's a wonderful stained glass window in the library showing the first plane they built, sitting in front of the factory. Lesser known is that on April twentieth, nineteen twenty-eight, a fire broke out in one of the buildings on the site, which killed eleven employees, mostly young women. It is among the deadliest structural disasters in Colorado history, though poorly remembered, although some of the victims' descendants still live here. It also had the effect of changing Colorado law such that fire inspectors following this had the ability to shut down non-complying businesses and structures. It's a story filled with intrigue and tragedy, corruption and cover-up. Myself and another researcher have prepared the first comprehensive narrative of the disaster, which we have presented to the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society and the Colorado Springs Pioneer's Museum. It's called "Biplanes on Broadway and a Fire in the Factory: Alexander Industries and Inglewood's Deadliest Disaster." As this coming April twentieth marks ninety years since the disaster, I'd like to propose a monument to honor the memory of the victims. I believe this monument would fit with the city's goal of inculcating a sense of place, culture, and history, especially along the downtown blocks of Broadway. Initially, I proposed a site on the south side of King Supers by the bus stop, very near the site of the explosion. But after consulting with some residents and neighbors, I feel a location along Broadway might be more visible and engaging. And I have already, I've briefly spoken to Doug with the Historical Society to get his take. But my purpose here tonight is to get a sense of City Council's thoughts on this, their will for a project like this, and maybe even to hear ideas for helping make it a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Berantine?
Have you contacted any of the families from the people who...
Yes, when we presented the presentation last year to the Historic Preservation Society, yes, we did actually talk to several of the descendants of victims of the disaster. They were thrilled to hear this. This was something that had sort of been a family story and had not been... sort of been a family story, uh, and had not been presented elsewhere. Uh, other than this, it exists, uh, sort of as a footnote. Inglewood's, uh, the city's website has sort of a minor footnote addressing it, which is what piqued my interest.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Gilbert, for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Andrea Mannion, here to speak about ACE. Good evening, Mrs. Mannion.
Good evening, Andrea Mannion. Um, I'm actually here just to bring up a few ACE business issues. Um, I've been interviewing and talking with a lot of businesses lately, and there's two issues that are continuously coming up with everyone. One is power outages, I guess. Um, a lot of businesses are experiencing power outages and it's a real nuisance for them because it could be two to seven hours and they have to reboot computers, or turn away customers, or can't finish their work. So, um, we actually reached out to, I think it's Tom Henley, our Excel rep, um, and he said he'd be willing to come to an ACE meeting, and he said he hasn't seen any power outages in Inglewood, and asked us to record, you know, the time and the date of these power outages. So we've been asking businesses to do that for us. Um, in fact, three members of ACE have the same problem with their businesses, so we're having them track and record so we can get back to Excel. Um, but I just wanted, uh, council and the city to be aware in case you guys have heard of anything or, 'cause I don't know if it's a power issue or city infrastructure thing going on, but um, definitely need to start a resolution on that. Um, the second issue is our increasing homeless population. Um, and it's more than just on Broadway. I've talked to lots of businesses on Old Hampton there, and they're having the same issues with theft, loitering, you know, trash debris everywhere. They're like scared to keep their, you know, doors open during the day. Um, they still call the Inglewood PD when they have issues, and they are told to lock their doors, but it's not very feasible, you know, for a storefront to keep their doors locked all day long, so. Um, and I know it's a difficult issue, but um, I think we have to start a conversation about it and hopefully come up with some resources, you know, to help these people. Or, so, you know, the businesses have something to tell these people. Um, and it's not just like substance abuse and, you know, mental condition people. It's a lot of families and a lot of business people have told me, "Oh, I see families or people in their cars hanging out by my businesses," so. Um, just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for counselor for Mrs. Mannion? Councilmember Barrett?
Um, how, do you have an idea of how many businesses are experiencing the power outages?
Um, it's a lot. It seems to be between, like, Old Hampton businesses are experiencing it. Down by the city center, they are, like in the Big Lots area. And then even on our street, like Washington Street does, we have like a daycare center there, and then that little supermarket there, they're experiencing it as well, so.
And I'm sorry, I'm messed. Who, who did you say was advising the businesses to lock their doors?
Um, Inglewood PD.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Mannion, for coming and speaking this evening. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 8, is Communications Proclamations and Appointments. I'd entertain a motion on 8A.
Moved.
Second. Thank you. Any comments or discussion on the proclamation? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. And now at this time, I'd like to read this proclamation into the record. See if we have anybody here to receive this. Um, I don't believe we do. Uh, the proclamation reads, "Whereas, the American Payroll Association and its more than 21,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the more than 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings and withholding federal employment taxes. Whereas, payroll professionals in Inglewood, Colorado play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Inglewood, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting and depositing. Whereas, payroll departments collective, collectively spend more than 2.2 trillion annually complying with a myriad of federal and state wage and tax laws. And whereas, payroll professionals play an increasingly important role in ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates. Whereas, payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems. Whereas, payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state officials to discuss both improving compliance with governmental procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. And whereas, the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week, I hereby give additional support to these efforts, to the efforts of the people who work in Inglewood, Colorado and the payroll profession by proclaiming the first full week of September Payroll Week for Inglewood, Colorado. Now therefore, I, Joe Jefferson, Mayor of the City of Inglewood, Colorado, hereby recognize Payroll Week in the City of Inglewood, Colorado, and I urge all Inglewood residents to support efforts of the people who work in the payroll profession." Thank you again for that. We'll make sure that gets, uh, to the appropriate body. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 9. This is the Consent Agenda. I would consider a motion on...
Excuse me, Mayor, aren't we not gonna have a follow-up on the comments?
I'm sorry?
Public comments.
Ooh, thank you. I would like to bring us back to council response to public comment. I appreciate that, um, before we move on to the Consent Agenda item. So that'll bring us back to Agenda Item 7 of the council response. Does anybody like to kick us off here? I did have a few comments myself. Um, Doug, thank you for sharing more history about the city of Inglewood. Uh, Mrs. Bailey, thank you for coming again. Um, you know, as I've stated before, you know, the council's not responding to public comment on this issue. Unfortunately, we're preparing for litigation. It has been advised, uh, not to publicly comment and rather rely on the, um, information publicly provided thus far. Mr. Harris, uh, thank you for your perspective on immigration issues. Um, you know, I think this council body needs to have a conversation about whether, again, to take this issue on, uh, and under what format. You know, I don't believe that the, um, conversation was solely geared around illegal immigration, but I know that that's your focus of your concerns, uh, and that is noted as we move this conversation forward. Um, Mrs. Bowlin, thank you for coming. I'm sorry to hear that you're having to deal with a pretty ridiculous situation, it sounds like, over there. Uh, it seems pretty clear to me that private businesses are not allowed in that area, and it seems pretty clear that that seems to be what's happening. Uh, you've heard a couple council member give some councilman requests. I assume the staff will be in touch with Mrs. Bowlin shortly to follow up on this matter. Um, the council itself will be taking up the issue of short-term rentals and Airbnbs and that type of function, um, fairly soon. Uh, Manager Keck, can you remind me perhaps when that might be on the study session?
Yeah, so accessory dwelling units are gonna be on your study session, uh, September 18th. That's a 6:00 PM meeting.
What about the short-term rentals, Airbnb?
Uh, Airbnb and the RBO and all the others will be on September 25th study session, which is 6:00 PM in the, in the room next door.
Thank you. So, uh, you're bringing up some pretty timely issues. You're not the only one that has asked us to sort of take up this issue and come up with a policy that works for the city. Um, so please stay tuned and please be involved in that process so that you can get your voice heard on the, uh, policy as we move forward. Uh, Mrs. Mannion, thank you for your representation on ACE and for your service to the city of Inglewood. I appreciate you bringing up the power outage and the homelessness issue. Uh, these are both issues that, um, uh, we will be working on. Uh, homelessness particularly, uh, this council has had some substantial conversations on. Uh, we're working with Denver PD, our local PD is working with Denver, to, uh, try to find out about some local resources we might be able to provide, specifically the deal with homelessness issues. Um, you know, I know you're saying they're not all substance abuse or mental health issues, and I totally agree, uh, but we do have a little bit of a void in being able to direct, uh, people to services in that regard. So, uh, we are trying to step up our game, um, in that regard. So thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Gilbert, thank you for your idea of a historic monument. Uh, we talked a little bit offline and I, I appreciate this idea. I've told you about some near and dear monuments in the metro area, uh, in my heart, and I, I think this would be a great idea along South Broadway. I think the new Historic Preservation Commission would be well situated to pick this issue up and say, "Hey, let's help find a space. Let's help find, uh, other types of historic opportunities, uh, to help designate the area and let people recognize the longstanding history that Inglewood has that really differentiates us from other communities." Uh, I'd hope that at some point, we could come up with a, um, a map or something of these, so that you could take a historic tour, walking tour of the city of Inglewood, uh, on your own, perhaps on your own time, or perhaps even get organized some groups to do that. Uh, so thank you for those thoughts. That's all I had this evening. Councilmember Berantine?
Um, Doug, thank you very much for your, um, historic update, but I, I do agree with the mayor. I think that, um, in combination with, um, Mr. Gilbert's idea of identifying what happened there, we have a lot of areas where I think, um, that should happen, and we should really, uh, put that to the Historic Preservation Committee to go ahead and identify that so that we can have this all kind of happen at one time with a, a process and a purpose, um, so that we don't make it look like we're favoring one issue over the other, but that we're honoring a, a, a lot of the, um, activity that's gone on, and some of it unfortunately very tragic. It's not the only tragic one, but there are, there are things that we would like to, um, to honor. So, um, I agree with the mayor that we ought to, uh, task the committee with that, but you're not in charge of the committee. We are, so, uh, you, you seem to have your finger on the pulse, so we, we didn't mean to make you, uh, the head it up, but, um, appreciate that, if, the working together from both of those committees. Um, Kathleen Bailey, thank you again for your presentation. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Harris, um, can I call you Mr. Harris? Sir. Um, I, I appreciate your follow-up on this. Uh, I know when we're dealing with illegals and, um, immigration law and us, to the extent that we are cooperating with other entities and following the law is, is a touchy, touchy issue, and I appreciate your, your, uh, follow-up on that. Thank you. Um, I've already addressed Mr. Gilbert's. I do, I do appreciate, um, the attention that some of this got on Nextdoor. I saw some of the article and, um, appreciate that, and I think there's some good ways for us to handle it. Um, Andrea Mannion with, uh, ACE. I really appreciate the work that you've done as chair on this committee. I really have started to hear a lot more activity going on with that committee, and that means that the businesses have, have a better voice with this city. That's what that committee is supposed to be for, so that we're partnering with them. So thanks for bringing the issues that they have, um, are dealing with, um, to us. Um, Ms. Bowlin, um, I'm, I hope that even though you, um, uh, went out of town that one time, that our police did follow up, um, and at least went by there, because they don't need, there's kind of a confusion going on both with code and with some police issues, that somehow our citizens are required to complain and that that's what's necessary in order for the police to follow up. If that were the case, I would have never gotten a speeding ticket, 'cause nobody sat on a corner and said, "I'm complaining about her going 35 instead of 30." The, the police have the capacity and the authority to go ahead and, and file complaints. They see somebody breaking the law, they are able to enforce the law, make arrests or do whatever is necessary. So it may just be that they did follow up and because you were proactive in going to a hotel, that you may not have been aware of it. So I would like for the, um, city manager to go ahead and provide us with all of the, uh, police action, uh, that took, uh, place on this property, because maybe they did follow up. Um, and I, I wanna give them credit for that if they did, and then if they did not, uh, knowing that this was going on, maybe we could follow up on why not. So, and I appreciate some of the issue with the ADUs. This is, um, something that I was very excited about to begin with and have had a lot of pushback from my constituents in District 3 on this, because there's always another side to the coin. There's always, every silver lining has a cloud, and we have the obligation to explore both of them before we go through anything and look like we're rushing through something that could have some impacts for a long time to come. There was a reason it was in the 50s. There was a reason it was allowed then. There was a thought process, and there was a reason it was taken away. So we need to explore that and have some really in-depth conversations and not make this look like we're just pushing anything through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
Yes, I would like to thank everyone, um, for coming out. Um, Doug, I always enjoy the history lessons, and I was really kind of excited when David was bringing a history lesson too. So, thank you. Thank you both, and, um, hopefully we'll be able to do something with that. Um, Kathleen, I just wanna thank you for coming out, and, um, I know that we cannot comment on it, but, um, I just thank you for your faithfulness to that, um, that cause. Um, and Sarah, um, thank you for coming forward, and, and hopefully this will get taken care of. And, and actually, Councilmember Berantine, I was gonna ask for the same thing about the, the police calls. Um, and Councilmember Berantine has been talking about tiny homes forever, and I told her I never wanna hear another thing about tiny homes.
It's not that they're bad. It was a meeting I went to, she just admitted.
So, anyway, thank you for bringing that forward. Um, and Andrea, also, uh, wanna thank you, um, for what you're doing with the ACE Committee and, and, um, bringing these things forward. And I think the homeless situation is not just impacting businesses there on, on Hampton, but on Broadway also, and I do believe we have to come up with a solution for that. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on now back to the Consent Agenda items. This is Agenda Item 9 under 9C1 and 9C2. I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the Consent Agenda items. Councilmember Russell?
I would like to pull 9C1.
Thank you. Any further comments? That leaves us with 9C2. Any comments on 9C2? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Okay, that brings us back to 9C1 that was pulled from the Consent Agenda, and this is the Police Department Uniform Agreement. The Police Department staff is recommending council-approved by motion, uh, of the uniform agreement between the City of Inglewood and Adamson Police Products for the purchase of uniforms and equipment items, beginning August 2017 through December 2020. Our staff source is Commander Kelly Martin. You can stay there, and, uh, we'll skip the staff presentations. This was a Consent Agenda item, and skip directly to, uh, council member questions for staff. Does any council members have any questions? Councilmember Russell?
Um, my one question is on the financial implications. It says the Police Department budget includes funds specifically allocated for uniforms and equipment each budget year. And I've kinda asked for, um, the budget page, um, and the fund or the area that that comes out of. Um, and I, since you didn't give us that, do you know what budget line item?
I do not. Um, I could find out that information.
Okay.
But I currently don't have it.
All right. Thank you.
Any help from the city manager's office or finance on the, uh, finance piece? We can come back to this issue later. Anything else, Councilmember Russell?
No, I don't have it.
Come back to you.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Look that up, and I'll go to Councilmember Berantine and come back. Councilmember Russell. Councilmember Berantine?
Um, also the concern that it's a multi-year contract and how we're handling that and the budgeting piece of it as well. And obviously, just as a matter of, I think we did agree that anytime there's, um, just saying that it's budgeted doesn't, doesn't answer the question what the financial impact is. So we need to just be consistent in making sure that we make that information available.
Okay.
And all, and then the issue with the multi-year contract as well.
The multi-year contract is consistent with the contract that just expired.
Okay.
We inserted taper language into that agreement, and it specifically says that we can get out of any agreement within 30 days. So it runs, it could run for that length of time, but if, under taper, if the council at any point within that amount of time wants to give 30 days notice and end the agreement, you can. If at any point in the budgeting process, the budget for the Police Department does not provide for uniforms, then the agreement automatically ends. So, uh, that standardized language that we're required to have in it has been added.
Is it only if they don't, um, including if the budget amount changes?
If, the exact language is if the, if money is not appropriated within the budget, the agreement... the agreement ends. So, the specific language is if money is not appropriated, if the money is not there. So, there's two outs for the city.
Let's find your answer to that.
Thank you. Further questions for staff on 9C1? Councilmember Russell?
I just have a comment. I believe also in that contract, doesn't it say that if the cost of uniforms goes up more than 5%, the city can decide whether they, I mean, they can raise it only at certain times, but if it goes beyond 5%, we can reevaluate whether we want to do that or negotiate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions from council? I'd like to loop us back around. I don't know if City Manager or Finance had an opportunity to where the financing is coming from for...
We did find it on page 119, if you have your budget books with you, on the 2017 budget book. It's a lump sum under Contractual Services, but I'm drilling down right now into OpenGov to actually find out what the line item amount is for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
While we're waiting on that, I suppose I would entertain a motion on 9C1. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Olson?
I just have a question because 9C2 doesn't have a line either related to budget, and I'm wondering, have we made a decision as a council that we are asking that in everything we do, we have this? If we have, then let's do it, and let's be consistent, but it's not on other things either. I don't worry about this, but if we all think we need to do this, it's fine. I thought the question on 9C1 would actually be that it starts in August, and we're already a month past that. But I don't know what we all, did we all decide that, or is this just one or two of us saying we want this, or how are we really doing this?
Now, I think historically that information has always been provided in the staff memorandum.
As a page number from the book?
I'm sorry?
As a page number from the budget.
No, just referencing where the fund, you know, the funding, under the financial impact, under that paragraph, historically, that information has always included the funding source and the total cost. And I know that there's been some inconsistencies recently, and we've kind of talked about that a few times, but I, my understanding is that this body's intention is to always have that type of information in the financial impact portion of the memorandum.
So, we would want more under this one, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And we should have had more on it.
I think that's fair.
At the Police Department budgets, it's not enough. We would want to know exactly the line. And so, then when you go back to keep Inglewood beautiful, it says the three different areas it comes from and not how much from each. And I'm wondering if we can get, I just, what I'm worried about is for staff, because it seemed like it was a surprise to him that he would have to do that, that we be really clear with our staff so that they know what we're asking them to do and not embarrass them here.
Manager Kek, any comments on the format of our reporting?
Yeah, we're actually working right now to standardize this so we don't have this issue pop up again. We recognize that, yeah, this particular section of the staff report was left blank and just explained where it came from. In the future, you will have the copy of the budget page as well as the specific line item that actually shows the appropriated amount of money for that particular expense. In looking into OpenGov, it appears as if the 2017 budget for uniforms is actually pretty high. It's $81,000. It is again on page 119 of your budget book. It's a part of a larger number for Contractual Services.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. My point here was to make sure that your work that you have to do for this is really clear what we're asking you to do and that we're not being consistent with any of the other ones that we're doing.
Thank you for raising the consistency issue. And again, you know, as we continue to kind of understand what council needs in order to make these decisions, we'll make sure that we have a template that can be followed by every department. Some departments haven't had to come forth with anything, and this is an example where the Police Department hasn't had to generate a request for something like this, and so we'll make sure that that is addressed in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine? We are still on Questions for Staff at this point.
No, I greatly appreciate that Councilmember Olson noticed that the KUB didn't have that on there, and it should. It should. We have, as I was looking through some past ones, it was very consistent in the past to have that financial impact on there. And I think what happened was when we started just saying that it's already been budgeted for is when the page got added. But is it possible that we could go back to putting, if you're going to say it's budgeted for, then put the amount on there in the page as well? Because it isn't just, I don't think it's just a matter of saying that it's already been budgeted for, so it doesn't matter. This is a matter of transparency for the public to know how much is being spent. $81,000 is a lot of money. And I think the reason to answer Councilmember Olson's question, I think it was because it isn't really specified the actual amount in the contract. I didn't see it. So, if we don't know, I mean, at least for KUB, it says $40,000 or whatever, I mean, from memory, but for this, because you don't get the number in there, then it becomes even more important to know exactly what was budgeted for because it's not in the contract. So, I think for consistency's sake, we've asked for that all along, and Councilmember Olson's right, we should consistently have it. And thanks for catching that KUB didn't have it. We should have brought that up.
Entertain a motion on 9C1 at this time, and don't worry, I'm still going to ask staff about budgeting. First and a second there. Move us on to discussion on this. Councilmember Berentine?
Unfortunately, I'm going to also be consistent in that I cannot vote for something where the contract neither has the amount of money nor does the document that I'm voting on have it within what I'm voting on the financial impact. So, if one or the other had it, maybe I could see my way clear, but call it nitpicky if you will, but I will be consistent in this because what I am passing, what I'm, the document I'm voting on does not contain that information. So, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Other comments on this issue? I will be supporting this. I do generally agree with some of the comments being made on the dais that we do need more information as we're considering these activities. However, I do not want to negatively impact the Police Department and their operations in ordering of uniforms and equipment. Obviously, safety being really first, we need to make sure you guys are taken care of and can do your job. Is there a negative impact if this is delayed? Manager Kek?
I don't believe so. Again, in a contract such as this, it's not a set amount. We're not buying $81,000 worth of uniforms in a year. So, I appreciate the points that have been raised. Note taken, we're going to continue to refine that so we don't have to have these discussions each meeting. I think what we're trying to do is allow the Police Department to purchase items at a set price. That has been, again, sent out through a valid RFP process. We had two respondies, as you saw. We don't know how much uniform we may need to buy. Depends on turnover, depends on what transpires with uniforms in any given time, if they're ripped or torn or destroyed in the process of doing their work. So, I can't, I couldn't give you a bottom-line figure. It's not a not-to-exceed amount or something. It's just, again, allows us to purchase at the prices that have been negotiated, which is actually pretty aggressive. It's less than what we're currently paying for these items. So, I don't know how to overcome that piece of the question that you're raising, Mayor, but certainly understand the reticence right now on your part to approve this, again, given that there was some financial figures that were missing.
So, no negative impact? Is that what you're telling me? Sorry.
Long answer, I think we could probably wait until the, when's the next meeting? The 17th, 18th?
Yeah.
I probably could wait another two weeks.
You know, again, hearing what you're telling me, I feel fairly comfortable moving forward. I would like to see where this is coming from at a later date, perhaps other comments. Councilmember Berentine?
Did you say that there was a not-to-exceed number in the contract?
No, there isn't. Again, what's the not-to-
I missed, then I misheard you. I apologize. I thought you said that was.
Yeah, no, no, no. I said that doesn't contain that. I said, in this particular matter, it's the ability to purchase these individual items at the prices that are stipulated within the addendum to the agreement.
Well, I appreciate that, but kind of similar to the wastewater or waste management, I think that we, I mean, at least a not-to-exceed or some kind of more information than is actually available to us. So, I appreciate you giving some additional information, though. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, we wouldn't obviously be able to exceed the appropriation that's been given for the amount.
Well, not really.
Do others feel comfortable proceeding here? I mean, okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record shows six ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Berentine.
I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 10. No public hearing items tonight, so I'll move us on to Agenda Item 11. This is Ordinance Resolutions and Motions under 11A, Approval of Ordinances. On first reading, we do have 11A1. This is the CDBGIGA. This is Council Bill 49. This is the Community Development Block Grants Intergovernmental Agreement with Arapahoe County. Staff recommends council approve a bill for an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Intergovernmental Subgrantee Agreement for the 2017 Arapahoe County Development Block Grant Program between the Arapahoe Board of County Commissioners and the City of Inglewood. Our staff source is Senior Planner Harold Stitt. Good evening, Mr. Stitt.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As you said, this is a request for an ordinance to approve a contract and intergovernmental agreement with Arapahoe County for fiscal year 2017 community development block grant funds. The amount of funds available to the city for this fiscal year is $115,000. That would be used for the E-Cubed program, Energy-Efficient Inglewood, wherein we provide a grant to income-qualified households of a maximum of $8,000. And in return for that, the homeowners must contribute 20% as well. And the program is designed to provide energy and energy conservation improvements to homes such as efficient furnaces, efficient windows, insulation, and other energy-efficient upgrades.
You. Questions from council regarding Council Bill 49? Seeing none, entertain a motion. Oh, council, we do have questions. I apologize. Councilmember Martinez?
I just have more of a statement. I'm really excited to see this come forward. I know it benefits a lot of folks in our community, and I think it's really a great service that we offer in conjunction with the Arapahoe County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Berentine?
Oh, we'd already completed questions?
No, we're still on questions. Councilmember Russell, I'll come back to you for comments. Councilmember Russell, a question?
I do have some questions. Down under the financial implications where it says the city will utilize a portion of the community development block grant funding from the project, estimated $4,000. On Exhibit A, it shows that they're allowing $14,600 for administration.
Correct.
So, it's not 4,000. It could be 14.
At maximum, yes. We usually anticipate a lower number because of the number of households that we serve. This grant amount would serve a maximum number of 14 households. So, that $4,000 represents the staff time needed to process those applications, and we have not, in my recollection, exceeded more than $4,000 or $5,000 in staff time. But that's the way the county set up the application. It's roughly 10% of the grant amount can be used for administration, but historically, we've not used that amount.
Okay. And on, is staff pretty familiar with all of the regulations surrounding this?
Yes, we've been doing this program for a number of years, in addition to the Housing Rehab Loan Program that we operated for close to 35 years. So, we're very familiar with the requirements. We've not been audited by the federal government or Arapahoe County. We've been monitored and not, they've not found any inconsistencies in our record-keeping. So, we're very confident that we can handle the federal and county requirements for this program.
Okay. And then the other question, I noticed that in here, this, these monies are mostly, they're targeting low and very low-income families.
Correct. That's the federal terms for those categories. It's 80% of the area median income is the maximum income that a household can have in order to qualify for this grant program.
And so, do we sometimes have a lot less people apply for these things? Because even 20% of that total fee is a lot of money for low and very low-income families.
We've been able to expend every dollar that we've received for this program over the years that we've handled it. In some years, we have a waiting list, but I do agree that the 20% may be a hurdle in some cases. And what we have done in the past is create essentially a small declining lien that if the homeowner stays in the property for a maximum of five years, that $2,000 grant that we add in is forgiven over that period of time.
Is it legal to do that?
Pardon?
Is it legal for us to do that?
Yes.
According to federal laws or HUD regulations?
Yes, this is a grant from the federal government through Arapahoe County to the city. It's not a loan. So, we have structured that in the agreement with Arapahoe County that we can provide these funds. The standard approach would be a maximum of $8,000 to be spent on energy-efficient upgrades, provided that 20% of that cost is covered by contributions from the homeowner themselves. So, what that means is you can have a maximum of $10,000 invested for those energy-efficient upgrades. Not everybody who applies for this loan, or, excuse me, for this grant program uses the entire $8,000. So, whatever portion of that grant amount they do use, they have to contribute 20% towards those costs.
Okay. And if for some reason they sold their house before that amount of time, then the city would recover those funds, which would then go back to the county, or...
Yes, it would go back to the county.
Okay, thank you.
You. At this time, entertain a motion.
Moved?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. Councilmember Berentine?
I did have a question. One, under the detailed program requirements, what does comply with Section 3 requirements?
Could you tell me what page that would be on?
It's in Exhibit A, under the less detailed program requirements. And I wasn't sure which Section 3 requirements that we're talking about.
Do you have a specific citation? I'm trying to find that.
I think it's on- It's on, under Exhibit, the reason this was pulled last time was because Exhibit A wasn't attached.
Correct.
Exhibit A has now been attached. It lists the detailed program requirements. That's Page 2.
Yes.
And the second bullet point up from the bottom says comply with Section 3 requirements. What are they referring to?
Section 3 would be Section 3 of this document, Draw Requests.
For which, for, what's the next page? Page 4?
It's on Page 4.
Okay, so that would be the, okay, I see what they're saying within this amount. So, on the, on the financial impacts, and I am concerned when we have a different number. I mean, that section of it wasn't included when we originally had this, and looking at that to see that it's listed as 4,000, 1,14,000 is allocated, and I would have liked to have had some information on exactly what's been, the costs have been that we've recouped. Because what you're saying here is that an estimated 4,000 to partially offset the cost of those salaries and benefits of the people doing what in Attachment A is a very long laundry list of things that you guys are supposed to do to make this work. And so, I think it's necessary to know exactly how much it's costing us and if we're, exactly how much we're contributing, because you say that's part of the city's contribution, but I don't know how we're getting credit for that or taking advantage of what we're contributing to it if we don't identify how much it is we're contributing. So, I'm very concerned about the numbers not matching up. I mean, if we're going to say the, everything that the city uses above 4,000, which we are not going to tell you how much it is that it really costs us to implement this program, is the city's contribution to this program, then we need to make sure that it's identified, and it's not. So, that's a concern to me. I do appreciate that it was tabled and that the additional information was then provided, but it is the additional information that has brought some concern to me in moving forward with this financially. We cannot do that unless we know exactly what it is we're putting in and what we're committing to. And I would like to, if the city's doing that, I'd like to get credit for that so that we're saying we are not taking full advantage of the money of what this program really costs us so that the community, the people in this community can fully benefit from this program, and we're not doing that. And I just don't think that that's wise.
City Manager Kek, did you have some comment there?
If I may, maybe take a stab at this. I believe the services that they're-
I believe the services that they're talking about, or the costs they're talking about, are in-kind services. So, the staff of the City of Inglewood is managing a federal Community Development Block Grant Program. We can get you that cost, actually. Now that we have the Resource Alignment Diagnostic Tool and online PBB, we can, that's actually a program that we have. So, we can call out that program, and it's the administration of the CDBG program. I don't have the program up in front of me right now, but we can get you that cost for you to see it. I believe that's what's being referred to as the in-kind services cost that the city provides. And I'm sure it is quite substantial, because we're talking about a lot of staff time of several staffers, and not just Mr. Stitt, but also Nancy Fenton, who oversees the disbursements of those grants.
Thank you. Mayor Pretten?
Yes, I want to thank you for bringing this back and getting this done. One of my neighbors was able to take advantage of this program. You know, the situations change in people's lives. They, when they bought the home, they were, had gazillion plans to refurbish it, and, you know, job situations change, and people find themselves in different situations than they'd hoped for. And they were, they, in fact, I just met with them just a few days ago, and they gave me a tour of all the new windows they had in their home, and said, please tell everybody in Inglewood that, you know, they helped us, you know, get rid of a drafty home, they have a little baby girl, and, and they were so glad to, to get help with this major issue that on their own, they could have never done by themselves. So, they're grateful, they're, they plan to live here forever and never move. So, I just want to say that I, I've, you know, seen this program firsthand, do some very good things for some very good people in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
So, my question goes back to, do we have any idea how many staff hours it does take to administer this program?
I could give you a rough estimate, but it's based on the number of applications that come in and how complicated or less complicated those applications are. The amount of money that's, that the federal government allows you to set aside for administration is reflected in, in the document. But we, like I said before, we rarely expend that amount of staff time in administering this program. So, I, I don't know the exact number, but we can get that for you.
Okay, so the, the applications don't even come in until this gets passed, correct? I mean, and then we have to advertise?
We do a little bit of advertising, but word of mouth, and the, the notoriety of the program is what really sells it. Like I said before, we usually have a waitlist for the small number of grants that we can provide with this money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to comment that there usually is a waiting list, right? Because this is a pretty popular program, and people really like to take advantage of participating in it. And I, like Councilmember Gill, have heard from several folks that just rave about how much energy they're saving and how much money they're able to save through this, this program. So, last I heard, there was a waiting list, so I hope we continue to keep growing the waiting list.
You, Councilmember Berantine?
Well, one of the requirements, the responsibilities of the City of Inglewood for implementation of the program will include to market the program. So, I mean, you've already agreed to that, I think. Doug will be happy to hear, but I'd like to know how it works for you to comply with the State Historic Preservation Office Agreement for work completed on homes 50 years or older, or homes eligible for historic preservation designations, and how that plays into it. I mean, that, and then also, if we could, at least on these types of issues where you don't know the complexity of a, of a application, or you can, you have history to go on in how much exactly we have used before. And I assume you have some history on how many hours it's taken before. And I would have, I would have just felt more comfortable to have that included so that I could vote on this.
You, Councilmember Russell?
And then the historic?
The, there is a procedure set forth in, in the state, in federal statutes as well to clear a property, is what the term that we use, to determine whether or not it is a historic structure. And in many cases, because of the age of the structure, over 50 years old, there have been modifications done to the structure that don't make it eligible for historic designation at the federal or state level. So, that's what we use. There's a, State Historic Society has a, a work program, a checklist that we go through to verify that the house either is or is not of historic status.
And will our Historic Preservation Board be being brought into this process at all to, to take a look at what's going on with this and how we do that?
We could notify them of the number of applications that we get and the stat, the historic status based on the federal requirements, whether or not the house, you know, constitutes a historic structure. And we can certainly provide that information to the board.
Thanks.
You, Councilmember Rulson?
I want to thank you for this. You all have done this for a long time, and actually think, I'm not sure that everybody here knows, but we've actually gotten more money because we execute these programs so well. The CBGG grants are something that has been, you know, talked about at the federal level being cut. And so, I really appreciate that you've been dogged about continuing these and trying to find a way to get them to our citizens. The historic piece, I appreciate your answer to that, because I've heard from some who have, you know, Arapahoe acres, when they've thought they were looking for things, and found out when things have been changed, they can't do anything under their house within the state, within the state rules, anyway. I don't know how the federal works. So, I thank you again for working on these. I think it's a great bang for the buck that we estimate only about 4,000 for this, it's really cool. So, thanks.
You, I too am supportive. I like Councilmember Rulson, I'm happy that we're able to be beneficiaries of CDBG, very proud of our E-Cubed program. I heard Harold Stitt kind of refer to it as, perhaps not to be confused with our E3 program? Is that the distinction now, the cubed and the three? Of the more general energy efficiency program we kicked off, what it was, a month ago? Yeah, I feel like we have a little bit of confusion regarding that program and this grant program we're talking about here tonight. So, hopefully, we can, you know, come up with a different name or somehow differentiate those two. But I really am proud of the program and the win-win that we're able to create with the federal dollars. This is a rare, I think, and innovative use for CDBG funds and a model that I think I've shared with Senator Gardner and our Congresswoman Diana DeGette. And they share this model with other municipalities in their jurisdictions. So, appreciate staff's efforts in keeping this going. I would like to see the, now that we're able to look at the programmatic level, what the, you know, total cost of our internal administration might be. Looks like Manager Kek might have something on point with that.
I have that, sir. It's Program 614 and Program 615. There are two programs within Community Development. Program 614's cost for one employee is $10,646. Program 615's cost is $44,931. So, you're roughly about $56,000 to, to provide the oversight of this particular program within the Community Development Department.
Okay.
So, if you open up your Resource Alignment Diagnostic Tool that you have access to when you look for those programs, it's 614 and 615.
Thank you. So, we're able to leverage our dollars quite effectively. It's probably less than a half FTE, I would imagine, and we're able to leverage the six-figure grant by, you know, incurring some of these costs internally. Councilmember Berantine?
Then why aren't we accessing the entire $14,000 that we are allocated to administer this program?
For, counselor, we haven't had this level of data. Now that we do, we can go back to the county and say, county, look, here is line item data, here is data that we've gleaned from, it actually even tells how much of a person is involved. And the mayor is absolutely correct, it's .45 of an FTE to administer this program. We can give them this data, and perhaps they will give us more money.
No, they, he's put in this document that we're not even coming close to using the money they've already given us. Okay. I'm sure that next time, we will have a little bit more information provided in the document we're voting on. I appreciate it, thanks.
You know, I do have a quick question. Could we amend this to collect the 14?
The way it's written is that under CDBG, we can take up to 10% for administrative costs. Historically, the city has taken approximately 4,000. But the agreement allows for up to 10,000, as long as you can document that amount. So, we don't have to go back and amend it, it, it's already provided.
You, Councilmember Russell?
On Page 4, which is just a couple pages from the end, and this is in the, where it talks about the budget, what is the difference between amount paid by the county and then the total budget? Like, it shows the amount paid by the county is 14,600, but the total budget for administration is $37,644. And then, the, the grants was $100,400, but the total budget is $120,000. What is the difference between those two columns?
The total budget is what the program cost would be, that, that first number is the administration. Now, the total cost of administration is $37,644. We can only take $14,600 from the grant and apply that to administrative costs.
Okay, so that kind of ties into the numbers that the city manager gave us for Program 615, the $44,931, or, or the other 614, $10,000. It's because that's how much the employees' time is going to cost?
Right, correct. And then the, the grants, the base amount that we can actually grant is $100,400, because you subtract out, or at least the county looks at it in terms of, the city would in fact use the entire $14,600 for administration costs. And that would leave only 100, well, it would leave $100,400 for the grants. And those two numbers add up to what the total grant amount for the city is, the 15, 115,000. And then, the, the total budget reflects our administrative costs included in that. So, that's why that number is 167,000. These are numbers that the, the county put together. I'm not sure I can explain how the grant under the total budget is 120,000.
Right, because are, are we going to loan out 120,000, although we've only been given 115?
No, we don't have $120,000 to loan out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You, Councilmember Berantine?
Well, that's what I was going to ask, then where did the other 20,000 go? If the, if the E3 administration, the 37,644, is intended to go ahead and represent what we expend in administering this, and we can recoup up to 14,000 of it, with you in this document intending to only recoup 4,000 of it, then where does the other 20,000 under Grants for Energy Efficiency go for the 100,000 that it goes?
I, I can't explain the 120,000 number. I'm not familiar with how the county does their budgeting. But we only have $115,000 in this grant. And then, as the city manager indicated, we do have in-kind contributions through staff time that is what that $37,644 represents.
Well, he's saying that actually it should have represented somewhere, close to 50,000. But I get that everybody's going to, next time, we'll have it more in line. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments on Council Bill 49, please vote.
Could I confirm a second, please?
Who was the second?
I was.
Thank you.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
You'd like to move us on to general discussion and open it up for councilmembers' choice. Would anybody like to kick us off this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
I just have two quick things. First, I would like to see if council has any interest in having a joint candidate forum with the city council candidates and the Board of Education candidates. I think that might be a nice service to our community, to go to one place to hear all of that. So, just wanted to put that out there and see if council has any interest in pursuing that. That's the first item. And then, second is that KEB is having their Household Hazardous Waste Event Saturday, this Saturday, at the Inglewood Service Center on 2800 South Platt River Drive, from 7:30 to 11:00. So, come check that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
I would be in favor of a joint forum. And beyond that, I don't have anything else for this evening.
You? Councilmember Rulson?
I have one thing. I guess if we go out tonight and look at the fountain, it's going to be teal lighted, right, Mr. Manager, Manager Kek? And if you remember, probably about a year ago, one of our citizens, Carol, I'm blanking on her last name, I hope she's not listening, I just emailed, who was in, in one of our neighborhoods, who is herself recovered from ovarian cancer, and she asked us if we would do teal to represent awareness on ovarian cancer, which strikes women at, just very ruthlessly and at higher rates than we sometimes imagine. So, I'm really thankful that the city came up with, Dave Henderson came up with a way to do that, so we are not actually dying water anymore, which was really not a very wise thing for us to have been doing. But now, we have a lighting system where we can do a number of things. So, I really appreciate his work and your staff work. Manager Kek, if you can pass that along. And then, I would, I did send, gosh, why am I blanking on Carol's last name, an email saying that if she could maybe provide us with some information on, that could be available when people ask. Perhaps the Herald would like to do an article, I guess he's gone, right? So, would like to do an article that would help us with getting the word out about it, and perhaps something on the website. I don't know if there's even an avenue for that, to put something up. But I think that's great. It's wonderful to see we can do some flexibility like that.
You.
I will find her name in a minute. I'm fine with it, if that's what people want to do. And what I'm worried about is we may have way too many people, and then it gets muddled, but I think I'm fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
I'm going to let Councilmember Russell go first. I've missed some.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And as far as the city council sponsoring something for the candidates, it's, that's not been done in the past. There has been outside organizations that do that, like the League of Women Voters and, and other groups. And I think it, I think it would be better to be left outside of city council than actually city council sponsoring that. Also, I have a question. I asked a while back for the bonuses and employee compensations for the last three years.
I do know that HR Director Maria Gonzalez is currently finalizing that report. You also asked for attrition rates for five years for all departments, not only just police, and so that's what's kind of slowed her down. So, I do know she's been working on that, because we talked about it earlier today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilmember Berantine?
Yeah, I, I guess you had already addressed that we did request the FTEs, so I guess that's included in her report.
That is, it will contain actually all FTEs. It'll include all performance payouts over the last three years for every employee, no matter whether they're executive or not. I think that was the request we heard, and it does contain, contain all our FTEs that we currently have.
Okay. And, and I had requested some time ago, a report similar to the hiring process, that Councilmember Olson had requested last June. And so, if we could get something that's similar to that request that she did, I have requested it before, so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison. It is exactly Councilmember Olson's request. I can shoot it to you again, if we could have that report, that same thing she requested and received, and have that updated, so that I can, we can get an apples-to-apples request out. The exact name of how Councilmember Olson, or it was titled, I will again forward to.
Yeah, please, please send that, because I'm not sure what you're referring to. That'd be helpful.
Okay. It's a previous request, but I'll, I'll bring it, I will email you the specific details on it again. There was a request for the Waste Management Contract, and we did receive that. But the only way, what, what I'm looking for, maybe I need to make this a little clearer, is that we're going to pay somebody $49,000 based on the, on that we're saving $49,000. thousand dollars, half one year and half the next, totaling forty-nine thousand dollars. We can't compute that if we don't know what we were spending before, so I need to have that information, so that, of how that's being calculated and how we're coming up with the forty-nine thousand. You had multiple contracts before, and multiple service providers, apparently, so you must have some way of knowing what was being spent before, and who those contracts were with, and what we're, and now what we're spending with Waste Management, in order to do the formula to pay them.
Counselor, I believe that information was provided to you. You received two reports. One of them, what was called a baseline report, that did indicate all the costs associated with not only garbage, recycling, but also portlets. That was in there. And then, also, we provided you with the RFP that chose, showed the responses from the companies that did respond to that. So that data was in there, that contained, that's how they created the baseline and how they decided we would be able to save the forty-nine thousand dollars in the first place, is that they went through and combed through and said, here's what your spend is for those three particular categories, here is what the responses were from the three companies, and here's the recommendation to go with Waste Management as the most responsive and responsible proposer.
That was on the RFPs. Those were the RFP pieces of it. I'm looking for what we were spending before, and if I missed that, maybe you could go ahead and mention that.
Yeah, I'll resend the baseline report to you.
Because what I was seeing was what, the information was in the RFP, but not what we were spending before, so I can't compare it to the RFP. I have to compare it to what we were spending before, and maybe my eyes were blurry that night, but I saw the RFP portion of it, I saw the Waste Management Contract portion of it, but I did not see, it wasn't clear what we were spending before, so if you could point that out, I would appreciate it.
Will do.
And then, the process for the budget has, is of a concern with the capital improvements coming up, and just trying to get us back on track to following the charter. And I was really concerned that we didn't have the process followed for planning and zoning as it's laid out in the charter. That probably, that needs to happen in June. It specifically says ninety days prior, and a little bit more information. I know that the budget book is coming out, that a printing issue happened, and it's supposed to come out tomorrow, and I assume that it will follow the charter and that you'll have the two years plus the current year, as the charter requires. But we really need to have that as part of a consistent plan in how we're doing the budget throughout the entire budgeting process. The capital improvements plan seems to, plus we don't have the minutes from their meeting to get a little bit more information on what's going on, when they discuss that, so it seems from the charter that it's supposed to be more initiated from the planning and zoning, not something that staff is just bringing to them, and then that they're, have such a small amount of time to even discuss, given that they only got it August 22nd, and that's certain they're not going to meet the ninety days prior requirement. So if we could make sure that...
Kind of a point of order, Mayor, just for clarification here.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little bit worried that we're having a one-way conversation here, from one person on our council to the city manager. I think your point is probably valid. Let's talk about it as a council and decide, okay, did this go as we want, and is it following our charter? I don't, I don't feel very comfortable with this telling our manager what he needs to do and get things for. I'm fine with the request. I think we should talk about it as a group and say, okay, how are we going to do this next time, and are we in compliance, and go with it. But I...
You know, I generally agree. I mean, I agree that one member doesn't speak for the entire body, and, you know, I think that if there's clarification needed on direction on this, city manager, please ask for some consensus. If I can help provide that type of information, I'm happy to. You know, I think what Councilmember Berentine was suggesting was direct language from the charter. I don't, is there an issue with that?
Councilmember Berentine, and I have spoken about this issue this week, and I did put in a request to staff to have a response created, and I was just actually following up to see if that had been drafted. Apparently, a draft went out to be reviewed earlier today, so there should be a written response to Councilmember Berentine, I'm thinking tomorrow, on that issue, but we actually had to go back and talk to several staff members to see exactly what the process is, so that we could respond to that one clearly.
It's got posted as a council request, then?
We can post it as a council request.
Yeah, that would be great, then all of us would know.
I hadn't intended to, but I will.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and that'll get us all sort of on the same page. Hopefully, that resolves this point of order. We can go back to member choice here.
There was a consistency that I brought up when we were discussing the budget, that we were not following the charter, and the, "We can't unring the bell and do it different this time, we'll do it better next time," is getting a little old. This is exactly what happened last year, and we are doing it again, and it is of concern. It's of great concern that it keeps happening. So we either start scheduling our time and prioritizing it, and do one of the three major functions, which is to do the budget and do it according to the charter, or we're not doing our job.
Mr. Mayor pointed...
Manager Keck might have something.
And I don't think Manager Keck has ever thought that I was his individual boss.
Thank you. If you guys could stop, I'm giving Manager Keck the floor right now.
As a point of information, Mayor, these assertions that continue to arise, how that we did not follow the charter, are erroneous. The only thing that we did not follow the charter on, perhaps, and it is kind of wonky language that we have in our charter, with having the Planning and Zoning Commission generate and emanate the capital improvement plan is very difficult. Obviously, they did just deal with that, and it does not comply 100% with that, but these other assertions that the budget process has not been done appropriately or correctly is, they're unfounded. Quite frankly, what you're going to be getting in your budget book is in compliance with the charter. Matter of fact, it's more than two years of data. The belief that the city council somehow puts the budget together is also erroneous. Under the city's charter, the process has been followed precisely. Mr. Mayor, where the staff generates the budget, it is submitted to the city manager, the manager puts forth a proposed budget. This year, again, we've, you know, taken back the curtain, allowed the council to come in, and actually help with the design of the budget. That process started in March. We believe very strongly that this particular budget process has been one of the most robust in this city's history, allowing the council at many opportunities and every turn to have access to data, to have access to the budget document, to be able to look at, line out in detail, well before actually what your ordinance requires the Budget Advisory Commission to do so. So, any, again, any concerns that have been raised with the budget, the bell has been rung. You have had the opportunity to make that input. Now, the opportunity for the public to comment on that will be on September 18th. If, in fact, there are changes that need to be made after that, after hearing comment from the public, the council does have the authority under the charter to do so. To try to change the budget before then and before now is not appropriate and doesn't follow the city's charter. So I just wanted to say that. I don't want to sound too defensive, but these ad hominem attacks, again, over and over and over, how staff has not followed the process, is not, is not accurate, and we need to take a stand and say that that's the case this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you very much for your response. I wanted to say that, the woman's name was Carol Goldstein, and also, just to reiterate with this, I am, I don't have a problem with what you raised at all tonight, Councilmember Berentine, I really don't. I think it's something we, as a council, need to talk about. I'm uncomfortable with any one of us telling our manager what he needs to do differently, what we think has gone wrong, and not have talked first about whether we believe we've done something out of order. That's all I'm asking for, and I think we need to keep talking about this process, because some don't like the process we use. I think we spent an awful lot of time on the budget, but I am fine with the question you raised, just that I don't want it to be...
But your concern about it being addressed to the city manager has already been directed and addressed, and I was not finished with that. If it is...
Hang on just a second, I'll come right back to you. Councilmember Olson had the floor.
I just wanted to say it was Carol Goldstein, and then respond, yes, but that's fine, she has a part.
I'll come right back to you here, Councilmember Berentine. I would like to get some of my choice in as well.
I was not done.
I moved on and responded, or I recognized Councilmember Olson, you did not respond. In my opinion, in my opinion, you were done. I'll come right back to you here and just...
No, I was not complete, completed in...
Well, I apologize. In my subjective opinion, it was, and I apologize.
And that was pretty subjective. I'm letting you know that I wasn't done.
Okay, and you moved on, and we've had a member comment from Councilmember Olson, and now moving to my comment, and I'll come right back to you, Councilmember Berentine. Again, I'd like to move on to some mayor's choice here. I would like to thank everybody who attended the appreciation night for our board and commissions. I think it was the best board and commission appreciation event that we've done here in the city of Inglewood. I loved having it down at River Run, really made for a conducive, I think, environment for us to sort of share some ideas. I loved that we were able to get everybody talking a bit about what they do. I do think staff needs to be a little bit more conscious, perhaps, of not putting some of those folks on the spot and trying to select some of those speakers ahead of time. I realize that asking people to publicly speak in front of some people at a moment's notice is a little bit much to ask, I think, for our volunteers, so perhaps we could try to designate, as we get our SVPs, who might be the speaker for each body. I think would be appreciated. You know, Business After Hours at the Twin Dragon went really well. Mom celebrated her fortieth anniversary. Thank you, all of you, for coming and supporting. Did also want to try to get some feedback on this immigration issue, that now we're hearing another speaker sort of saying tonight, saying, hey, let's not take that on. You know, I would like to get, try to get some feedback, and again, some consensus on whether or not this body would like to take on this immigration issue, or a welcoming community proclamation might be a reasonable starting point, is what I was sort of suggesting. I would like to try to get us to some consensus as well on this election event, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Berentine and ask others who have not weighed on maybe these issues to weigh in. Councilmember Berentine?
Am I allowed to finish my counsel?
You are now, yes. I apologize for the confusion there.
The, whether the staff becomes defensive or not about my concerns about the budget process is something that you need to deal with. This is my representation from what I believe my job is, and I'm going to do that job. And the concerns I have, I'm going to bring up to the best of my ability, so that I am adequately representing my constituency. One thing on the charter that you said was that, the charter says, and this is something that council can talk about, but the charter says that the department heads bring their revenues and expenditures, that the city manager reviews them, and that the departments present to us. My concern in some of the process with that comes when I have people, department heads, coming to us and already having made decisions that they are somehow on their department balancing the entire city budget without us, as a council, being told exactly what the options were prior to that from the city manager's review, and that also includes your report as well. So I think that there are little differences in the way that we're looking at that piece of the charter, and if the defensiveness and the wanting to go ahead and constantly never have any negative brought forward, we do ourselves a disservice in not taking care of and tackling tough issues, and it becomes a method of just shutting somebody down and doing this narrative that it's just mean to bring up the issues that are going on. They're done as professionally as I can, and I expect them, as you have, continue to handle them professionally, not defensively. It's not an argument, it's not a debate, I'm bringing up the issues that I have, and I'm sure that they can be dealt with, and we will see whether we have a consensus on this council to deal with the budget, on how the charter lines it out, and how we see that charter lining it out. The Budget Advisory Committee has brought forward their report that includes some very serious issues, and, again, bring forward that not all is well with the city, and it's very concerning that they're already putting into a report from a committee that we put together, that we will be entering into 2019, a million short already with what they are seeming to think are some questionable revenues, and this council needs to discuss that. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity to read this, but that's very concerning to have this kind of piece mailed out, along with the recommendation, again, that property taxes be raised in order to go ahead and make things work. So I think more discussion has to happen, especially when it's been made very clear that we're going to be in some big trouble next year. And I think that if we follow the process a little, a little closer to what the charter wants, in the spirit of what that's saying, that we will have a more robust discussion, which the Budget Advisory Committee is asking us to do. I think that will be a difficult discussion, but I think it will happen if we come a little closer to the spirit of the charter. As far as the joint meeting, I talked to some of the people who are running for school board, and there's like, there's six or seven of them with the four, five, whatever, running for city council. To have a joint meeting where you've got 11 people, trying to do that with different constituencies, I think that if we're going to sponsor anything, that we would have to do them separately. It would have to be the school board, and then it would have to be council, because I think that those are, first of all, you don't have, everybody in the city isn't going to be voting on the Inglewood School Board, so they have some different questions and different issues that they're dealing with. So if we did it, it would have to be at least separated out, and I would have to agree with Councilmember Russell. The city, we've had it here before, but it's been the League of Women Voters that sponsored it before, it was not the city itself.
I just want to correct and just say that I wasn't suggesting that we sponsor it.
We've heard with the floor, we'll come right over to you here in just a moment. Councilmember Berentine?
And so they kind of understood, if you're in a row like that, to try and ask a question and have, you know, all of these people answering at one time is already difficult, when the League of Women Voters does it, but to combine it would be a very, I think, would be very difficult, and so, and I would like the city to stay out of it. The cost of it and the organization of it becomes kind of dangerous when the city's doing it, I think.
Thank you, Councilmember...
It's only my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine, or, I'm sorry, Martinez?
I was not suggesting the city sponsor it. I was suggesting we fold those other candidates into what has already been done. Some constituents brought it to my attention, that they would like to see that, so I said I would bring it to council. If council's not into it, then it's no big deal.
Thank you. Maybe do others want to weigh in on the joint event idea? I was just going to suggest, I love the idea. I think, I wish we'd have kind of thought about this a little bit sooner, because I do worry about kind of putting it together and finding, coordinating everybody's schedule, I feel like might be kind of difficult, but I'm open to the idea, if we can figure out how to make it work. I like the idea of a joint. I hear what you're saying, given the amount of candidates, but if we could work out some sort of joint event, or at least jointly marketed events, that we could split the cost on, I would be all for that. Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, I would say that I'm open to whatever, but I don't want the city to have to pay for it, I really don't. I don't think that's our place. I think the League of City of Women Voters, if they want to do it, and we want to suggest to them because we think it's better. I really do worry that there's too many people, and I don't want the school board not to be heard. The issues are quite separate, different, not separate, because we are intertwined, but I worry about it being too many people. But I certainly get it that citizens would like to come to one event and hear it all at once. I'm not sure it's practical. Maybe it could be a staged event, or a staged event, where they do one thing and then another, I don't know, but I don't want the city to have to put out money for it.
Others want to weigh in maybe on this election event? Mayor Portman?
I'm more than willing to participate. You know, it's funny, we always say we want the most transparency and availability to our public. Let's be available and accountable to our public. I'm good with it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Yates?
I know that the school district has tentatively expressed a willingness to provide space for something like that. I have to say that I didn't hear anywhere that it was being requested that the city sponsors this. What I heard was, would we be willing to join that and do something with it? I think it's kind of important. I mean, the majority of this city is covered by the same school district. What they're doing is very important to our community. It's part of bringing our community forward and giving us that leg up that we haven't had for a while. It takes city council and it takes a school district to work well in order for our city to prosper. So I think it is appropriate, maybe, maybe we break it in two sections or whatever, but there's just, it's a wonderful opportunity for our community. there's just, it's a wonderful opportunity for our community.
Yes, Councilmember Yates, thank you for the distinction between, you know, city-sponsored and funded versus, you know, just participating in it. So thank you for that distinction. I think what I'm hearing here is that we would love for another body to help organize the two groups into an event, but it doesn't sound like we want to take the lead and be the sponsoring entity or the entity who organizes and pays for this event. Is that a fair statement?
I'm all for leaving it up to the candidates then, if it's not being sponsored by the city or paid by, for us, then it's up to the candidates if they want to do it or not.
Okay.
People running, I'm not.
Sounds like there's a general desire to have some organizations sort of step forward and start to provide some of this so that we can inform the majority of our residents as far as upcoming elections. But I don't, I'm going to say that we're stopping short of having consensus on a city-sponsored and paid-for event. Perhaps we can discuss this a little bit next week, if we can touch base. I don't know if League of Women Voters is still around and wanting to do things in Inglewood. I know last year it was ECOG, so I don't know if they're planning on doing something or not, but perhaps by next week, we could flush that out a little bit and see what some of the options might be. Any feedback on the immigration or welcoming community issue? Councilmember Rollston?
When I brought that up a few weeks ago, I was not necessarily thinking about immigration. I was really thinking about what happened in Charlottesville and how do we become a welcoming committee? And that really was not an immigrant kind of situation there, and unfortunately, kind of got collapsed. But it does, they do blend into each other, but I would love to at least do a welcoming city, thinking about who are we, what are we becoming, what are our demographics? I think we know some changes that are going to come in the next 10 years. How do we prepare for that and think about it together? And there's no real clear answers for that, but I think just being cognizant and conscious about it is really important. So we'd love to do that as a leadership team.
You, Councilmember Martinez?
I agree with Councilmember Rollston on that, and I would like to maybe put it on a study session. I think it may already be scheduled, but maybe just tone it down a little bit more, something about like a welcoming statement. And I'd be happy to share an email with the council with a list of different statements that different cities have put forth.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? I'm hearing some general support around a welcoming community. Do others want to weigh in on that? We've got three members sort of supportive of doing a study session on that. As Councilmember Martinez mentioned, we do have something scheduled, but candidly, city manager and the mayor, Mayor Protem, have been struggling a little bit with the content and exactly how that should look and what the presentation should look like. So we're just looking for some direction on that. It sounds like a welcoming community might be a reasonable starting point. Do others have allergic reactions to that? Does anybody want to say we should leave this issue alone?
And that dates November 27th, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I would like to leave it alone. As far as I'm concerned, Inglewood is a very welcoming community. We don't have the problems like they have in Charlottesville, and I think we just need to stay out of it because we could create problems that we don't have right now. And in a lot of ways, I agree with what Mr. Harris said tonight, that in everything we do, we need to enforce the law. And that's, and, you know, it's not, all of these things are our responsibility. I mean, I agree with what Mayor Protem shared a couple of weeks ago about the county being responsible for a lot of the things that is going on. So my personal opinion is I think that we need to stay out of it at this point.
Councilmember Barantine?
I think the city manager said last week that for every action, there is an equal reaction, and the only way we can avoid that is by kind of leaving this alone, that we either end up looking like we are not supporting the law or law enforcement or the feds or process, or that we're not supporting another community. And so I believe that Councilmember Russell is correct. We are not Charlottesville. We are not having those kind of problems, and I think it's because we've, I think it's because of the kind of community that we already are, and we ought to celebrate and honor that rather than get in where we don't belong. We're not responsible to address everything, and that is not our authority.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Ms. Barantine and Ms. Russell. I just think we're walking into an area we just don't need to be. The county already is responsible for most of that stuff. And, you know, we are, I believe we are already a welcoming committee, okay, I can't remember what committee, welcoming city. I know that our, I've written with our police officers numerous times to see how far they go to be helpful and to, and to really work with people. I've written numerous letters of thanks to the chief about things I've seen our officers do to make sure that they help our community and help those they get in contact with. I don't think we have the problems, so I'm just going to ask, we just let the county deal with what they need to deal with, and we'll just be, continue to be a wonderful welcoming city.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates, you want to help us get consensus on this? I'm pro-welcoming community, so we got a 3-3 split. We can come back to this issue next week if you'd like.
I, you know, I'm kind of in between on all of this. I mean, it's, it's important that the people know that we're not doing anything that is rash or anything that is meant to harm. I think it's important that our community, we have laws, we follow the laws, and a lot of these issues are, are issues that are controlled by outside jurisdictions. I have also written with the police department quite a bit, and we have pulled over individuals that have been undocumented. And I never saw an officer go out of their way to harass the person or take him in, you know, if it was, you know, if it was a matter of insurance or whatever it happens to be, they get the appropriate citation for that specific issue. But they didn't, you know, I mean, it's, I, I don't know what we can really add to this subject, you know?
That being said, I'll suggest that for now, I'd like to remove it off of the, you know, future study session topics. As the city manager already pointed out, it had gotten kind of punted towards after the new councils being sworn in. I wouldn't want to put that pressure on the new council. I think the new council would probably want to determine for themselves when they want to take this issue up, so.
I would like to ask a question.
Please.
What does a welcoming statement consist of?
And that's what we have the study session for?
That could be the study session topic. We could look at different forms for that. There certainly are different language being used and different examples that you can look at from different organizations and from different cities that have done it.
I mean, is it a general, we welcome everybody and, you know, move to town and it's, you know, the, what is it, the welcome wagon? Or, you know, are we talking, are we specifically making a statement that, you know, if you're undocumented, we welcome you? Or, you know, I mean?
It's a prepackaged statement from an organization called Welcoming Cities America. And so they already have a template that you can look at and adopt. That's what it, that's what it's from.
I'll take a look.
Thank you. But for now, given this conversation, I'm going to remove it off the topics until we kind of get another consensus to add it again. Again, I just don't feel comfortable leaving it on the agenda for a future council to deal with. Again, I think that that council will have to make a determination for itself when it wants to take this issue on. I think I'm ready to move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening. Number one, this Saturday, not only is it KEB's Household Hazardous Waste, but it's also the Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project, National Day of Service, or Be a Tool Program. That will start at 8:00 AM at Community of Hope, United Methodist Church there on Broadway. I think Mr. Anderson left, but he is heading that project up once again this year, which is a kind of a cool thing. I think the goal this year is to do 12 to 15 homes. Last year, I think we worked on eight. Pretty exciting. We have lots of volunteers. They've already signed up for the program and just, again, look forward to blessing some of the people in the community who are less affluent and less able to take care of themselves and their homes and their property. And so there'll be a whole host of projects, including this year, some siding and more cleaning of debris and garbage from yards and trimming of trees and landscaping and painting. So should be a pretty good day. Hopefully, the weather holds up pretty well. Secondarily, Mayor and council, you saw on your packet this week that, a letter from utilities director talking about the failure of, again, the same storm drain line that failed last year under very heavy rain conditions. This pipe was further to the east from the previous failure. The good news is it didn't swallow any Sheridan police cars or any of ours this time, but unfortunately, it did open up a chasm that dropped in debris at the Oxford Station apartment complex. And the repairs have been made more difficult, if you will, by the fact that Excel Energy put their gas line in the inappropriate place, and so we've been waiting on them to move the gas line, and that work is not yet complete. The, the good news is that American Civil Constructors, who we moved to and I authorized to allow Mr. Brennan to move forward with, out of the emergency provisions in our charter, has been able to stabilize the pipe, has been able to replace some sections of the 100 and 130 feet that was damaged, but we have to wait until Excel finishes with the gas line. We are very lucky in that American Civil Constructors had their largest hoe out there and actually pulled the gas line, thinking it was located someplace else, but didn't breach the gas line, because that would have been a disaster. So, but we just have to wait till Excel completes that. As this particular repair goes forward, we'll be bringing forth, as required, the necessary paperwork for council approval, because these costs are going to be pretty significant as this is a major, major pipeline, as you can see from, from that. But the good news is right now, it's stabilized. Again, we're just waiting for the ability to complete the rest of that work once Excel finishes theirs.
Thank you. Questions regarding that issue? Councilmember Barantine?
In 2015, when the other line failed, wasn't anything done to, to address that issue and to make sure that that wasn't going farther down the line?
Yes, we did TV the entire segment up through where we're talking about now. For whatever reason, when the storm drain line hits the river and it begins to surcharge again up the river, basically, it's, you're pushing a lot of head or pressure into the river, but the river is already higher than the outfall is.
Mm-hmm.
That pressure has caused additional sections of this pipe to fail, and that's exactly what happened here at Oxford Station. So again, we've TV'd the lines to make sure, a camera to make sure that there aren't any other breaches in this pipeline, but this is older pipe. And in this particular instance, we see where there were some galvanized sections that, that did cause the failure, and those are the ones that are being repaired now with reinforced concrete pipe in these, in these areas. And so, yes, we did look at it. It's just one of those things where you don't know what you don't know until something happens. And here, something happened again with, with that particular failure. As you may recall too, as part of the River Run project, we did put in a new outfall, and we're hopeful that this new outfall, which is a much larger, it looks like a, an entry, it's a mine shaft almost, it's clearly greater than 78 inches. A person who's probably over six, well over six feet tall could actually walk in. That will help to ensure that we don't have that pressure building up again further up the line, but we are very concerned about this aged infrastructure in this pipe. But from all indications, from having our crews look at, look at it through cameras, we believe the section that's failed again is pretty isolated.
And the section that failed is on the Oxford Station property, which is new construction. So considering that that building was demolished and a new one built, I'm a little concerned that this happened on new construction, that we, that this wasn't identified in the construction process, or at least some mitigation happened, at least from the developer's part. And do we know that the developer wasn't, and that development going on there wasn't part of the cause for the failure?
Again, this was in an area that wasn't disturbed by the construction. It is closer to, actually, Oxford Boulevard itself and closer to the retaining wall that already exists there that holds up the abutment for the rail, rail facilities. So we're fairly certain that they didn't have any, have any damage to that. There's no sign of damage to the pipe from the top, other than obviously the pressure caused that pipe to fail. It was just, when a big pressure shoots back up the pipe, it scoured the top and it caused the failure. So we were concerned about that. We had to work very carefully, given the fact that there is now a building there, and that's, the majority of our cost actually was to reinforce with caissons around that area so that we wouldn't cause any sloughing of the soils that were helping to hold the new building in place. But I believe from having ACC look at it, that's American Civil Constructors again, it was their belief that, that they didn't believe that the construction had anything to do with it. They just believed it was just failed, failed storm drain pipe.
And I went on and saw some, and some of the pictures that got sent to me, is there any legal action that's being taken on the part of the, that project?
For our, for our work, no. We've been working very closely with.
I mean, if we can't, if we can't claim that they caused damage, then are they claiming that we caused them any damage? And are we in, any liability with this?
We've been in very close contact with them. I know that our staff has talked to our, our city attorney and made sure that we have the, taken the requisite steps, including putting in inclinometers, which actually measure, while we're doing our work, measure any subsidence or ground shaking that might have an impact on their building. So we believe we've gone above and beyond and indicated as to such to, to Littleton Capital Partners, who's the owner of that development.
Not going to look good for us if a new building sinks into the ground.
Understood.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I think you already answered my question. The 113 linear feet of caissons is meant to support the building, not the pipe.
Yeah, that's, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Rollston?
What is Excel's response to the fact that they did not place their line in the drawings that?
Well, initially, we, what, we looked at what we call ASBILT plans.
Yeah.
And the ASBILT plans are what our staff, as well as ACC, utilized to assess the situation. And that's why we authorized the work to go forward. As we found the gas line, Excel was called immediately, and they said, oh, you have to move this gas line. And we said, no, actually, you built the, your ASBILT showed the gas line in the inappropriate place. They showed it not, you know, running parallel to the pipe, not across the pipe. And so since they were in error, after a few phone calls to some people at Excel, they said, all right, we own it up, we're going to take care of this. But they've just been slow to get the work done, which is not uncommon.
It just really drives me nuts that they're like this. Is there any pressure that we can give? And then where else might they have something wrong so that we're going to have another thing happen and someone go in there with a?
We've.
A backhoe and accidentally pull out a?
That, unfortunately.
It'd have been disastrous.
This happens more often than we would care to be aware of. We rely on other utilities, public utilities, private utilities to provide us with the location of their facilities. And in this particular instance, it was done incorrectly. Somebody just drew a line on the plans and put it in CAD and sent it out and said, here, Inglewood, here's the ASBILTS. And it is troubling. But, you know, we have to work through it, and we're doing our best to do so, and we're just happy that Excel owned up to it, because it would have been another large expense to move that gas line. I mean, we're talking about a fairly large facility to provide gas, not only to that facility, but also several others to the south.
Is there a way for them to survey that they haven't done that in other places so we don't have a disastrous kind of response?
Yeah.
Or is that not possible?
It's probably not possible at this point. I think when we move forward in the future, we just need to rely on their best efforts and say, here's where it is, and hope that it's not where it's not supposed to be.
Can council do anything to help in this whole thing in terms of our?
We've raised considerable, yeah, we've raised considerable cane with Excel over time, and this isn't, this isn't an Excel bashing meeting, but the fact of the matter is, we have a representative, his name's Tom Henley. We talked to Tom, although their structure is such that he has no authority, no influence over the operations side, and that's, that's a problem. As a matter of fact, I sat on a, a focus group to help Excel do a better job and just hammer the hell out of them on this particular topic. We've had businesses who've been delayed from opening because of work that hasn't transpired after they've paid. A great example, example would be Calati Coffee, who paid in August of 2015 and didn't get ability to do construction until April of 2016. That's just unacceptable. We hope that they would do better, but as, as we're seeing all throughout this particular metropolitan area, there's so much construction going on that Excel is just far, falling far behind. They just haven't allocated the resources to get the work done as necessary. And that includes some key demolitions. Another one that we're waiting on right now is for electrical and gas to be shut off to a building along Broadway, the Broadway corridor across from Rico's, that we've been looking at for some time. That building sold for cash, which is great, they want to redevelop, but in order to get the utilities cut off, there's a, you know, it could be up to 16 to 18 week wait in order to wait. it could be up to 16 to 18 week wait in order to wait to get, get them out there to take care of that. That's exactly also what happened with the Hilltop Motels, by the way. Um, they had paid their fee to Excel, they cut that off, and it just took them a very long time to do it.
Could we write a joint letter to Jerome Davis on this and, and catalog these things to say, "This needs to come to your attention, this isn't working well. We, we want to work with you. You're the only thing we have. How do we do this better together?"
That's an excellent suggestion.
This is ludicrous.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Sorry, it's going way beyond the--
No, I hate to dogpile here, but, you know, add on the, you know, public improvements, uh, linkages we needed on the mid-block, add on the parks and rec tree issues that we constantly run into, uh, and they just remove these beautiful trees from our park systems without any notice and with, and leave us with a mess to clean up is, is, is unacceptable to me as well. So I agree, Councilmember Olson, maybe we should have some sort of concerted joint effort here, uh, to talk with, uh, Mr. Henley and/or the CEO to try to, um, resolve some of these issues. Uh, Councilmember Berentine?
Especially when we're doing new construction, since that, if we can, because that has to be identified when they're doing that construction, so obviously for the construction of the building, it was not in the right place during the whole construction time, they didn't know that. So all of that risk could have happened during the construction as, as well. So, um, if there's some way that we can take some, um, due diligence to, especially for new construction happening in these areas and demolition, that we're not putting, um, people at risk because we're permitting them, and we, we have some obligation to make sure that we've got, um, these things right. I mean, I, there's no way, I mean, Councilmember Olson, uh, brings up a good point, that there's, I don't think there's any way that we could just go ahead and expect that it's going to happen all at one time, but at least when people are digging and building new buildings and demolishing things, we take an extra risk for, um, having a catastrophe happen, and, and we won't, we won't come out unscathed on that. Um, Excel will not, at least in the community's eyes, believe that they were the only people that should have known, so whatever methods we can take. A million too, uh, that's a lot of money to all of a sudden have to spend on something that wasn't planned for, so, uh, it's, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, now, and just a point of clarification, I think Mr. Brennan was trying to indicate that, that's how much is in that fund. We don't believe it's going to cost that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That's the fund balance.
However, it's--
I was like, whoa!
We could if we wanted to.
Oh, good.
That's a lot of sidewalks or a lot of sewer that one could--
No, this, this repair could cost upwards of $300,000, but we have 1.2 million in the, in the--
In the fund?
In the fund, yeah.